So, sorry, just working on a few new kinks.
And welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. Okay, Commissioner Benjamin?
Present.
Commissioner Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Reddick?
Here.
Commissioner Polgar?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Everyone is present.
Excellent. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Just through the chair.
Please.
I was absent, so I won't be able to vote on that, so I'm not sure.
Through the chair.
Number 11.
It is an oddity because we will never have a quorum of people who are present for that meeting. And I wonder what the advice of the attorney is with how we approve minutes in this situation.
I think we've actually covered this. When we don't have a majority, we can note the minutes. If anybody has objections to the minutes, they can be raised, so.
In that case, I just want to clarify, there was a brief discussion with respect to the Highway 1 widening. The minutes accurately reflected the conclusion that there wasn't, that staff did not expect there to be a change in the amount of water. And we discussed the need to measure the flows in various locations. The summary of the minutes was a bit soft about that. We decided not to make it a condition because we didn't want to make it hard for Caltrans and MTC to go forward with their approvals because that additional condition could be a surprise. But my understanding from the discussion was that we were going to go ahead with the measurement of the flows. And I just wanted to ensure that it was clear to them. Otherwise, it would be good to me.
That was consistent with my understanding of the discussion, so Jill?
Sure. This is acknowledged in the minutes under the actual planning commission motion. There were two multi-part conditions that have been added to the coastal development permit. Of the second one, number one refers to installing a flow gauge and determining the baseline water course flow conditions. Is that acceptable?
It wasn't that it wasn't noted. I just wanted to make it clear why it wasn't a condition. We were accommodating the need to move forward with other approvals.
Yeah, it was just included as one of three performance measures.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Through the chair. Please.
I think I was actually here for December 11th, and I've referenced throughout the minutes as actually having made the motion. I do recall that conversation. So, I think what change needs to be made is that I just need to be moved up to present from absent.
Okay, so, and there you are on the motion. I carried 5-0. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Can the three commissioners who are there, can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, next item on the agenda is, first of all, I want to welcome my new commissioners. Welcome. Happy to have both of you here. Dinners with my next-door neighbor are going to be a little awkward because we can't talk about politics because Sarah is my next-door neighbor, so we're going to have to chart those waters carefully. But happy to have both of you here, and it's exciting to get some new diversity of opinions and views on the commission. So, the next item we have here, and by the way, we've been asked to make sure we speak clearly into the microphone. The viewers at home are having challenges. So, when you're using these, make sure the green light's on. And when members of the audience speak, please make sure the green light is completely on, and you can hear that resonating sound of your voice, Commissioner Benjamin. Okay, so, next item, election of a new chair and vice chair.
I'd like to start by thanking Rick for cheering us for a couple of years, steering us through some tricky waters. And it takes a lot of work to do that, so thank you. I am pleased to nominate Brian Holt to be the chair of the planning commission for the coming year.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to pass the gavel over to you, and then you can handle the next item on the agenda.
All right, thank you. So, next item on the agenda would be the election of vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Benjamin to be vice chair.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion.
Are you willing to serve?
Let me think. Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations, Commissioner Benjamin. Thank you all. Look forward to the year. Thank you, Rick, for steady leadership for the past couple of years. Looking forward to moving on. So, next item on our agenda is for public comment. This is for public comment items that are not on the agenda. I don't have any green cards or any speaker cards, either for open public comment or for our public hearing session. And I imagine there are folks who are interested in speaking on the public hearing. So, if you are interested in speaking on the public hearing, please fill out a green card in the back there and bring them up to us here. So, are there any items for open public comment, or any speakers for open public comment? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period, and we'll move on to our first public hearing item, which is a study session on the local coastal land use plan update. Jill?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commission and members of the community. Thank you. We're happy to see a full room tonight. First of all, you'll notice that the configuration of our room is a little bit different. We would like feedback on this. We know that people have been a little crowded in the back, so please let us know, and we will continue to try to use our microphones better. And I'll be working with the new chair on some ideas that we have, so thank you for that. Also, we are, that looks bigger. We're trying to work out our video. We didn't do anything differently with this, so I'm not sure why our slide is so reduced in scale. We'll see what we can do. The planning commissioners have hard copies of the presentation. They can also slide to the side during the presentation if they'd rather watch the screen and then come back forward for the discussion afterwards. And we'd appreciate their accommodating that. And here comes the presentation. All right, and then, first of all, we also, staff is happy to welcome the two new planning commissioners. They're hitting the ground running. They were sworn in on Thursday, and they are already collecting a stack of binders, including the one that is on the desk tonight before them. So, they're getting going. Moving into the study session, this is not a decision-making meeting. This is another study session, and there will be more. People continue to ask, is this the last time I have to make comments? We will be very clear when a comment period has an end time. So, this is ongoing dialogue. We are working with draft documents, and we'll talk about that quite a bit tonight as we present this. The other little matter of business that we want to remind everyone about, especially our two new commissioners, is that we are paying attention to potential conflicts of interest that individual commissioners may have. Under the Political Reform Act, the commission can oversee general plan and LCP updates. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, individual commissioners may need to recuse themselves. So, to simplify, public, you are going to have time to comment, and you can bring anything up that you like, and the commission will remain seated for those comments. When this item returns to the commission for discussion, we will check to see if there's any specific sites that the commission wishes to discuss, and if any of them are potential for a conflict, we'll set up the discussion so that the commissioner can leave the room for that period of time. So, with that, we are here tonight to present, oops, that's okay, you're ahead of me, two high-level overviews of draft chapters, the development chapter and the agriculture chapter. There'll be time for clarifying questions from the commission, and then public forum or comment, as well as commission discussion. This meeting's a little presentation-heavy, and I apologize for that. I know that can be a slog. There's a lot of new information, new ideas in the development chapter, this draft chapter. We want to make sure that folks understand what they're reading, what the context for it is, and we hope that it will help you give us better help as we move forward with revising this document over time. So, future study session, which we've already slated one for the February 26th Planning Commission meeting, should have a lot less staff talking and a lot more time for public forum and planning commission discussion. All right, so the draft development chapter is a place to start. And we're going to hearken back to a few of the foundational components of this process, noting that there's a lot of people in the room who have been here from the beginning. But there's folks who have come in along the way, and not everyone has attended every part of this process. And these pieces all come together and are really important. The guiding principles were established in 2014, and they've continued through the General Plan Advisory Committee context. I'm going to note, one of them about, we didn't really highlight it here, but the theme of agriculture and supporting the retention, long-term viability of agricultural land uses was definitely a theme of this general plan update process and LCP update process. Also, in addition to the planning context for the LCP update, we've been making quite an effort to stay current with council's priorities. And the city council priorities for several years now have highlighted affordable housing, concerns about housing insecurity. And so, you're going to see that referenced through this meeting tonight and how it came out in draft policies in this development chapter. So, now we're going to move forward a few years. Just over a year ago, in fall 2017, there was a study session in October where Charles Lester, as policy consultant to the city, presented a land use policy and growth management paper that he had prepared for the city. And his presentation provided an overview of the Coastal Act, the city-certified LCP, and various events, trends, and policy developments that have progressed since the LCP was certified in 1996. We identified challenges that were relevant then and remain now, such as infrastructure and approaches that could be modified from before, or brought forward from before, or considered fresh. We also acknowledged changed circumstances and major challenges that would need to be addressed, which include the council priority of housing affordability and also our PD build-out, our plan developments. When I say PD, that is what I mean. The next month, following Charles Lester's presentation, we developed basically a chart, a rubric tool, to overview and really illustrate the intents for land use policy relative to what was defined as a downtown core area, which is still the basis for a substantial component of the development chapter that we are beginning to work on tonight. And to make sure that we are on the same page, the downtown core area, which is depicted in this map in those three different shadings, was confirmed, revised, and reconfirmed by city council over a number of meetings throughout this effort. This map is the configuration that's presented in the draft chapter, and we're calling it the Town Center. There were reasons for clarity to rename it, one of those being that the word downtown itself means so many different things to so many different people that it was getting muddy. So, this is our town center, and then we're using downtown nomenclature very specifically. And you'll see how that is as we move forward. But with that rubric approach, and I don't expect anyone to be able to see these tables. They were put forward in a lot of detail back in 2017. They're also an attachment to the staff report. But the intent was, for example, for residential development, land in the town center would be prioritized for infill development, which had been previously identified by community members in our outreach efforts. They were looking for housing that was diverse in terms of size, price, the type of unit, and to be suitable for the diversity of Hafn Bay's population, including seniors, for example. We talked about incentivizing development in this area and what that would look like. We also talked about how to facilitate development in the established neighborhoods, really acknowledging the remaining infill lots, and that we wanted to be supportive of that because infrastructure is already present and the neighborhood context is intact. And this was consistent with the approach also to commercial and mixed-use development and acknowledging that for substantially undeveloped or underutilized areas, which in Hafn Bay are predominantly the planned developments, comprehensive master planning is needed. And we also talked about agriculture policy. And so, this overall approach emphasizes retention of agricultural uses. And Brittany is going to be covering that in a little bit in this presentation. She's going to cover the Chapter 4 as sort of a highlight in the midst of the development discussion here. Now, moving forward on direction that we received, we got a lot of community input. The minutes from that session are included in the packet. And we went back and reviewed what we heard from community members and the direction that we received from the planning commission. And it was clear that we had consistency really about the town center, emphasizing how it was defined and how to follow that basic rubric structure of incentivizing in the town center, facilitating in established neighborhoods, and requiring comprehensive planning elsewhere. We also talked about some new ideas that haven't been done here. One was transfer of development rights, and as well as a lot retirement program. We know there was public comment that evening, a lot of concern about potential transfer of development rights or TDR programs. The planning commission said, yes, we appreciate that. We don't have to do it, but we would like to explore it. So, you'll see that that is being explored as part of this development chapter, and we can continue to discuss that. Now, since that time, we've been diligently working on a number of things in the background, one in particular being the natural resources mapping that was presented back in fall of this year when the natural resources chapter came out. And then, following that, we had a study session in November where a biologist presented those maps. Those maps took about a year to produce, and they were essential to have complete before we could complete the development chapter. Other things that we were up to, and our city council was up to this past year, council held four listening sessions with the community last spring, which were intended to inform their priorities as part of their budget sessions. And again, they identified affordable housing as a top community concern. And to bring that conversation forward, the city hosted two community conversations about housing. One was in July, and the other in October. And the intent was to learn more about housing insecurity and the community's diverse, interest in diverse housing types. So, we covered, we'll just quickly click through some of the materials that were in those community conversations about housing. I know a few of you were there, but I suspect a lot of you weren't. So, we just want to make sure that you're aware that this occurred, and these were very well-attended meetings. We had at least 90 people at the first one, and I think 80 at the second one. Both of them have materials online. So, we talked about the community from a demographic and experiential perspective. We also noted values that the participants really resonated for them about the community, really related to the guiding principles that had already been established for this planning process, maintaining the small-town feel, acknowledging the agricultural heritage, really respecting the community character and the coastal environment, and also that these values present some challenges for how to move forward with planning. At the July session, committee members told us that they wanted to learn more about smaller, more affordable, diverse, and creative housing options. Many were presented in October, and these were a few that resonated with participants. They included farm labor housing, housing for seniors, for service industry workers, et cetera. And you'll see that some of these types are described in very general terms in the policy. So, that's new background, since we saw you with Charles Lester back in October 2017, and now you have this first study session, and we're caught up on this, what went into this draft development chapter. And it is laid out in, similar to the other chapters that you've seen released previously, it starts with a policy framework, and then we jump right in with the land use map and the land use designation. And from there, it begins a sequence of narrative discussions. And each topic area is followed by the policies that are pertinent to it. Based on part of town, for example, we start with town center, moving into established neighborhoods, and then going into the planned developments, agriculture designations, conservation designations, and then other non-residential land use categories. And there are quite a few notable updates since the LCP was certified here, as well as since there was a 2016 draft of this document that really was not, it didn't advance a lot of things because we were not working on any of the planned developments. So, there's a lot of new stuff in here because we did work on the planned developments this time. This is the first time that we're seeing some look at those. I think there's about 19 of them. So, we expect to get quite a fair bit of feedback, having not scratched that surface in a long time. Let's see, a few more things. Also want to note, I'm going to cover just a few of these things in a little bit of detail tonight and try to touch on everything very, very lightly. One of the things we're hoping to get out of community comment is where you would like more information and where we may need to provide additional work with the planning commission in public forum. It's hard for us to anticipate what that might be on a first meeting, so anything you can do to help us out with that, we'd appreciate that. Couple other notable updates, there are three new land use designations. One of them in particular came straight out of the General Plan Advisory Committee meetings. The open space for conservation designation was discussed in quite a bit of detail there. And it has come forward, and it's applied to the draft map. And we can talk about the criteria for where it is located. There's also a city parks designation, and as well as a designation for field agriculture. The agriculture designation is not applied to the map. This is a designation that was prepared in the event that a farmer would be interested in moving their land into that designation. There may be, for example, some kind of advantages for them to do so. But it isn't meant to be something that we would put on top of anybody's land. It's available as an option. There's also two overlay designations. Going to note one of them here and talk quite a bit more later about the priority residential overlay. But the stream belt corridor overlay is familiar from the 1993 LUP. That's a category that we have. But we're proposing to change that into an overlay, which would be on top of the underlying land use designation. And the reason for that is to provide some flexibility. It's intended to be coterminous with the extents of the riparian vegetation that was mapped in our natural resources chapter. But it can expand in the event that riparian vegetation expands, and it does. We've documented that on quite a few sites. Now, here's a land use map. And it is updated, and it is at GIS layers, and we hope that it reads well for you online. We think it should. If you need a nice, clean copy of it printed on a city printer, just let us know, and we'll be happy to do that. Following the land use map is a table that I would recommend you take a look at. It's two pages, and it lists every single property that is proposed to be re-designated as part of this particular version, this first draft. And we're trying to be really overt and transparent about this. This is a table that we probably wouldn't include in the final draft of the document, but it's meant to support the reader. It's the kind of thing we'd usually put in a staff report. But we're going to keep it in there through our review process. Back to the town center. As already noted, this is foundational for this policy document. Furthermore, the town center itself is differentiated between north downtown, Heritage Downtown, and south downtown. The planning commission previously identified the character and land use distinctions between these areas. And thus, this was made part of the draft plan. And we found, in drafting the policy, and along with our planning commission subcommittee, that it really served us well, the north downtown really being characterized by larger development areas, in particular shopping centers. And Heritage Downtown, of course, is our, I've heard called the four magic blocks of Main Street and the surrounds of that, and then south downtown, south of Correia, all the way down to our gateway. And there are policies that address each area. Agriculture is also really relevant to this town center definition. And it's addressed in the development chapter specifically with respect to the land use designations where it's found, the urban reserve, open space reserve, and horticulture business. But more so in the agriculture chapter itself and the use in more general ways. And so, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Brittany Cosalino, our associate planner. And she's going to provide an overview of the agriculture chapter, which is really in the context of the development framework as a whole.
Thank you, Jill. So, as Jill introduced, the town center concept is really central to the updated agriculture chapter. The Coastal Act calls for protecting ag land by separating urban and rural areas with a stable boundary line and minimizing conflicts between urban and agricultural land uses. Hafn Bay is unique in that the planning area is almost entirely within the urban-rural boundary, as you can kind of see on the solid orange line on this map here. And ag operations are interspersed with residential neighborhoods throughout the town. As development is anticipated and encouraged within the town center, the town center boundary line, shown in blue on this map, is used as a sort of proxy for the urban-rural boundary line in the agriculture chapter context in order to concentrate development away from the ag land that is located outside of the town center boundary. So, the agriculture chapter also builds off of many similar city council and planning commission and community priorities that Jill has already introduced, specifically supporting the continued economic viability of ag land, allowing ag-compatible and supplemental uses on ag parcels, and supporting farmworker housing as a form of affordable housing, as well as additional ag support. We've also heard the need to address land use conflicts in a more Hafn Bay-specific context. Our ag situation is very different from the counties with smaller farms and neighboring residential areas. And the first draft of this chapter that came out in 2016 relied fairly heavily on policies from the San Mateo County Land Use Plan, and some just... fairly heavily on policies from the San Mateo County Land Use Plan, and some just don't apply to our context. So, based on this input, this is a pretty different version than what you saw first come out in 2016. We've refocused the chapter and the ag land figure on the COSLAC definitions of prime and non-prime ag land, and those definitions have very specific criteria related to soil quality and productivity. We have introduced a new agriculture land use designation, as Jill mentioned. It is not applied anywhere, but it is intended for re-designation of open field ag parcels that become permanently protected for such use through agriculture easements or Williams Mac contracts, and it would be at the request of the property owner for that re-designation. There's also the focus around being inside or outside of the town center, as we have gone over, as the boundary for concentrating development within the town center and protecting viable ag land outside of that boundary. And we've added a number of definitions. So, to start, agriculture land use is defined as the use of land to produce an agricultural commodity for commercial purposes, and that does include equestrian breeding operations. To build on that, compatible uses, ag compatible, is defined as not being in conflict with ag uses, so they would be compatible, where adjacent to an ag operation, while allowing preservation of the prime or non-prime soils on that land. So, that could include open space, habitat restoration, public recreation areas, and recreational equestrian uses. Supplemental uses will be defined, as we've noted in our RADA sheet, for additional consistency and clarification, but these supplemental uses are addressed in policy. They could include things like farm stands, farm-to-table events, and small-scale lodging, just as a few examples, but we will include that and define it a little more specifically in our next version. So, the intent with these supplemental uses is to further encourage the continued economic viability of ag land while preserving a significant amount of suitable prime or non-prime soils. And the way we've done that is by applying a 20% maximum allowance to the supplemental uses. So, 20% of an ag parcel could be used for such supplemental uses. The 20% does not include things that are needed for the primary ag operations, such as farm worker housing, barns, and roads, but it would include area needed for the farm stand or the lodging, whatever that supplemental use may be. So, just a tool to give farm operators a little more options, but still make sure that that primary ag operation isn't overcome. So, the RADA sheet includes a long list of clarifications and edits since this draft came out in October. We've met with a number of community members and ag groups and gone through some additional Planning Commission input and public input, and so, we do want to clarify, this is still a draft, and we anticipate many further changes, but the intent with the RADA sheet and the clarifications made there were really just to clarify how to continue preserving our ag land and allowing permitted and supplemental uses while avoiding land use conflicts with non-ag uses, and then putting those policies that were pulled in from the San Mateo County Land Use Plan into more of a Hafn Bay context. So, here's our ag map. Again, you can see the prime ag land in darker green, non-prime in lighter green. Just to connect back to the development chapter, the town center shows where ag land is anticipated to be converted. So, there are areas that have ag land and ag operations within the town center, such as the Podesta PD that have been long anticipated for redevelopment, and the development chapter does support such conversion. Outside of the town center, on the other hand, most of our prime and non-prime soils are located in land use designations, such as the open space reserve, or urban reserve, or horticulture business. So, really any permitted uses on those lands permitted by the underlying land use designations, it would limit the extent to which the soil could be converted. So, another tool for preserving ag land outside of the town center. And then, we're, existing ag operations and prime ag land outside the town center are in PD, planned development, designations. Ag is a permitted use prior to the PD master planning, prior to redevelopment, and ag as a land use must be addressed in long-term master planning for those PDs, and Jill will get into that a little further next.
We're going to take a tiny break to see if we can get a better view on our presentation here.
While you're doing that, through the chair, I just want to commend city staff for the work you've done around this, and really invite members of the agricultural community to provide comments and feedback on what we've done here. The intent is to make agricultural uses sustainable in the long term, and we hope we've hit the mark. So, your written feedback, your verbal comment's always welcome, but your written feedback is really welcome for helping us make sure we've gotten this right. So, yeah, just, thank you, guys.
Looks like we're back on track. Thank you, Jill. And we'll go back to staff's presentation.
Thank you for the pause. I hope this is more comfortable for everyone. We think the maps will be a little easier on the eyes. All right. Thank you, Brittany. We're back to development. I'm going to cover a couple things in a bit of detail. I just want to make a note, it may sound like this presentation on the development chapter is all about housing, and it is, the development chapter is so much more than that. It's about all of the land uses, including preservation. That said, because this is a priority of council, and because this is one of the primary types of development forms and uses that is being considered in Hafn Bay and has always been on the minds of folks, we do need to spend some time on it, and we've identified needs with regards to housing. We don't have a lot of capacity for it. It has to be very paced and controlled, and we're worried about infrastructure. Thus, any housing that the city is going to bring forward, we really want to make sure that it matters, that it's the best that we can get for the community. So, thus, we think it merits this attention. So, focusing on that, there were a range of portions of the town center that we were taking a look at for potential housing sites, noting that there's actually a few PDs, planned developments, in the town center. That includes Podesta, the South Gateway, which is the Elsie Smith Estate property, which we've renamed, and the Stone Pine Cypress Cove PD, which is the Andriadi PD in your document now, which still has some development potential. Also, thought quite a bit about different kinds of housing and tried to have a very open mind about that, and for example, mobile homes are a really important housing type in Hafn Bay. Almost 10% of the housing stock in Hafn Bay is mobile homes. And we looked at the ability to expand mobile home park designation for the Hilltop Mobile Home Park on Highway 92, on the north side of 92, to include the Goat Farm property, and that is shown on the land use map. The plan talks about what we're calling shopping center retrofits. These are challenging to do, but if you get focused on it and you really want to do it, they can be done. The idea is, for example, we have four major kind of primary centers where there's probably room to do this kind of infill, Strawflower, New Leaf, Stone Pine, and right here, Shoreline Station, where there may be a pod of commercial development in the center that could be redeveloped into residential or mixed use of residential with commercial. We wouldn't expect the Anchor Store to change in the near term or even probably the long term. There's, it's something that is a very, very long game with shopping center retrofits, but this is a long plan. This is a 2040 horizon, and we should be planning well past our horizon and thinking about that, so that's why we included that here. Mixed use keeps coming up. People really like some of the mixed use ideas that have been coming through the Planning Commission, mostly with housing over residential. That said, we want to make sure people don't dismiss a single-use residential in the downtown, for example, not on Main Street, but on the B streets, and what that can really do for the actual quality and vibrance of a downtown neighborhood, where we have more neighbors paying attention to things and staying out later at night and that kind of thing. And then, what's in the lingo in our profession right now, the missing middle, the missing middle housing, what that's really about is duplexes, triplexes, garden apartments, the kind of development forms that tend to be more affordable because of how they're owned, because of how big they are, and a number of other factors. They're less expensive, for example, to maintain and to provide for those. So, you'll find policies in the draft development chapter that relate to that housing. We don't call it missing middle in there. We actually specify duplex, triplex, et cetera, and you'll note that. So, that's about town center housing. Like to spend, I should have had this up, sorry about that, giving you that context. We'll pause, and then move on, and talk about the priority residential overlay. This may sound like a new idea, but it's maybe not a new idea after all. It's really a new approach to a lot of ideas that have been brewing around for a long time. It started with community interest and also talking to our farmers about farm worker housing. We note that the open space reserve and horticultural business locations show this area striped on this map. Let's see here, there's down here, open space reserve, there's one of them, and then up here, we have three of them, and we can talk about them in more detail, but we'll just focus on those for this few minutes. And from there, we're thinking about what's allowed now. In urban reserve and horticultural business, both of those categories allow for employee housing, but they don't really, they don't say how much. Open space reserve doesn't allow any employee housing, and that's a category where you can have field agriculture, and it doesn't allow for employee housing. So, how do you deal with that? Well, there's quite a few approaches. Some of the, and there's, I'm sure more than what I'm going to present, but I just want to give a little bit of a context for it. So, one way to go is to re-designate a portion of these properties into a housing category, basically to rezone a corner of a property. This is a problem in that we would be concerned, I think, about losing agricultural land, and frankly, at that point, then, the housing really could be available to anybody who qualified for it, which is not the point. The point was to have it be available for the farm laborers who are working in that vicinity. Another approach is to change the rules of the designation. So, you're not changing the color on the map, but you're changing the rules that are associated with that zone or land use designation. The challenge with that one is to make sure that the rules are appropriate for the myriad of cases, and you can imagine, just looking at that map, that the parcel sizes are so different from different agricultural uses. That alone would make coding it pretty challenging. The language would get really complicated. I predict that it, I could imagine it might not cover every case, and it could be really, really difficult to implement. So, we're proposing a different way of doing it, and we are eager to get your feedback, and we're certain that there's even more approaches. But what we're putting out here is an overlay, which is a different way for changing the rules without changing the map very much, that gives the city a lot of control. So, Hafn Bay doesn't have any overlay designations right now, but they're really common in other cities, so I just want to note, this isn't something from way out of left field. These are things that are done quite commonly elsewhere for all kinds of different reasons. So, what we're posing here is that the overlay would be applied where it is really needed for the right amount of land on part of an ag property that is most suited for housing, avoiding the best portion of the ag property where maybe it has the highest productivity for prime soils, dealing with visual resource needs, avoiding natural resource or their buffers and that kind of thing. So, really citing it specifically, sizing it appropriately, and then having a density associated with it, so you have some confidence about how much there would be. And so, that's what's posed here. There's two acres shown on that open space reserve property at the south end of town here at Miramone's Point Road, and then there's an acre and two, and another acre up here at two, a couple sites on Rocket Farms and one on the Schickenberg Farm Properties. And we've spoken with representatives of these properties. We could also apply this designation for urban reserve properties, and we are working with those property owners. They're thinking through where they might want this to be located because, you know, it's a real consideration in terms of their operation as a whole, but generally, they're really eager- But generally, they're really eager to entertain some way to ease the process and really have a, kind of, already accepted through policy that, yes, farm labor housing's going to be located here, and that's okay. It was planned to be here, and we still have enough land left to continue the primary use of the property, which is the agricultural use. So there's also an urban reserve site that we did note, and it's an example, it's over here off of, I'm not, where am I? Right there. On the corner of Bev Cunha Country Road and Frontage Road, just west of Highway 1. There's two houses there already. It's an urban reserve parcel that's only an acre, and it's not big enough to be farmed, and it doesn't, it just doesn't have any, have any room to be in ag use, but it already has a housing use. So this is another idea of how to use the overlay. We would like feedback about that as well. This is about taking a really non-conforming urban reserve property and trying to repurpose it to support the urban reserve use. So that is, that's the notion around that one. Now, once we got going on this, we got a little momentum, and we started thinking about other uses that could use a little bit of help. And the first one that came to mind was our state parks, folks. They had seven ranger houses over by, at the end of Alcatraz in the Miramar neighborhood. And as everybody knows, one of those units was recently lost because of bluff erosion. So now they're down to six. The land use plan and the city's policies really make it very hard for them to replace that lost unit. They have discussed this with staff. They're concerned about their long-term prospects for being able to house rangers in Half Moon Bay. We believe that it's a community value through the parks' master planning process and other processes that we've been through, that having park rangers live in the community benefits you, and benefits the quality of those spaces and the participation of those parks employees in the actual community itself is also a benefit. So the idea is that perhaps an acre of parks land, or maybe land near it, could be appropriate. Now, we didn't cite it because we haven't had time to work with them on this, and there's a lot of challenges for citing it. There's a lot of natural resources in the area. There's visual resources, and this is not a slam dunk idea, but it's something that we have floated to our Coastal Commission staff colleagues, and they're interested in learning more. And so we told them we would go ahead and vet that with our community and bring that back to them. And from there, we got even a little more ambitious. This idea really was kind of stimulated by experience that we have in other places. For example, I've worked on teacher housing before in another community, and it was a very appreciated and successful project, and that was, it's one of many where this has occurred. So obviously, schools and other public facilities aren't priority uses per se, as agriculture is and public recreation are from the context of the Coastal Act. So perhaps maybe the name of this category is a priority residential, maybe it should be more about local or workforce housing type of a, type of a relationship. That said, one of the key upfront policies in the development chapter is to designate affordable housing as a priority use, and to afford it all of those benefits, which includes the ability to use priority water connections for affordable housing. So if it is designated as such, then maybe it is a priority use. So you will see, all three of the public school sites, Hatch, Cunha, and Half Moon Bay High School are striped in, as is a little bit of this community center property that we're on, really the 555 Kelly property. And then, there's two churches that also happen to have a public facility land use designation. Sometimes quasi-public uses, which is what a church is often considered to be, end up in a public facilities category. And the Our Lady of the Pillar Catholic Church and the Lutheran Church are both in that designation, and so we've noted portions of their properties as having potential for this overlay. Now, in the school context, if, I've been told that, well, gosh, maybe there aren't enough teachers or faculty members to actually warrant developing housing on a school site. Would it be okay for housing to be developed on an underutilized portion of a school site to be offered to other public employees? So perhaps sheriff's office folks or fire department folks, that kind of thing. So we want to put that out in the discourse here for you to think about and give feedback. With the churches, we recognize they probably have very limited numbers of staff people. The way we drafted this was to consider folks who work there or possibly the people that they serve. So that's a very open thought. All of this housing, though, would need to be affordable. We haven't said what level at, but I'm talking about deed-restricted, affordable, most likely to very low or low-income households that qualify through San Mateo County. And the great thing about doing this as an overlay is that you can be that specific, and it can all be affordable. It's a lot harder to do that in a residential district, because that's really limiting what can be done in that zone just to an affordable housing use. As an overlay, it's an added use. It's on top of what they can already do. So it gives us a bit more flexibility. I'm looking at the attorney to see how far off I am at this point. She hasn't given me the hook quite yet. I'm on the precipice, so I'll stop. So that's the priority housing overlay designation. We encourage you to read about that. There's quite a bit of detail, actually, in its actual definition in the early part of the chapter. Study the map, and then you'll notice that there are policies that relate to it. Again, I don't think it's new ideas. I just think it's a new, a different way to address some of these ideas, and we're really hoping to see some development of this. We were told that, I think it was Marin County was looking into doing this as well by Coastal Commission staff, so we'll see where they are. All right. It took us 30 slides to get to planned developments, and we assume a lot of you are here for this. Quite a few things need to be noted before we jump in. First off, and I've already alluded to this, in this multi-year endeavor, the PDs were never really addressed in the planning effort. This is the first time they've been looked at fresh in a long time. We understand that this is new for everyone, including us, and that we have left ample room for improvement. We expect quite a bit of feedback. That said, we made a real attempt to document clearly what the planning approach was and to establish consistency in how each one was addressed. We also note that there's quite a few PDs in Half Moon Bay that are fully built out, and so their policies were fully, they were completely replaced with new policies to support the maintenance of those PDs over time, and to also acknowledge that if they were to substantially redevelop, they would need to be in the business of getting new zoning or preparing a new specific plan to move forward. Let's see here. We, for lack of a better term, we retired a few PDs, some lands that didn't need to be PDs anymore. For example, the Guerrero PD, the largest property in that area, has a deed restriction for wetlands, and the residential parcels that were included in it have all been developed and can be easily addressed through regular zoning. And so the Guerrero Wetlands was put into an open, that new open space for conservation land use designation. It does not need to be a PD anymore. There was a public facilities PD, and that's over off of Bev Cunha Country Road. We acknowledge that we have ESHA there, and it's really no longer thought to be an appropriate location to expand public facilities. It was taken out of the PD designation. There was a PD for, I'm trying to remember, west of, it's not west of, west of Pillar Cetos. Yeah, it's over by Pillar Cetos. It was an urban reserve PD, and the urban reserve designation addresses it fairly well. Nothing ever happened in, really, in that PD area of note for it to be utilized as a PD. If we got that wrong, let us know. We don't have to retire that one, but it really didn't make sense to us to move it forward in consideration of the information that we have and the work that we've been doing in the city. And then a number of them were renamed to kind of better reflect current conditions. For example, the Andriati PD, which is Cypress Cove and Stone Pine Center, confuses a lot of people because they know the Andriati Farm is on Kelly, and they don't understand why the Andriati PD is up the hill off of 92. So we've just renamed things typically to the local naming that has occurred over time or give, we give things names that reflect where they're located or somehow otherwise describe them. So you'll see that with the South Gateway PD and a number of others. So if it, if it looks unfamiliar to you, hopefully you'll be able to trace that through. We try to leave some breadcrumbs in there, making references to the old naming. So this is our map of established neighborhoods as well as planned developments. And I did want to make a note that also that this plan includes a whole section on established neighborhoods, which the LCP doesn't include that right now. And we don't need to do that. This is something that we could, we could do along with the community character policies. We could probably put that into a general plan element if we didn't want to include it in the land use plan update. We were given policy guidance by Charles Lester and others to go ahead and include it at this point, but we still have options one way or the other. We just think it's very important, though, to acknowledge the existing neighborhoods and to furthermore, really, you'll see for each and every one, we've counted the development potential, the infill development potential for each. And some may surprise you. There's quite a few vacant lots left, and Our Lady of Park in particular, but several of the others. And in terms of the council priority for focusing on the town center first and then infilling areas that are already developed as another layer, those are really important sites for the city to consider. All right. The other thing that we did is produce some diagrams. And you'll see that every substantially undeveloped PD, there's a schematic similar to this one. And the idea is not necessarily to have them all move forward in the final document, but to help people visualize the property while they're reading the policies, so that you can see where things might go and things might fit. And I do want to also say that these came from our own planning efforts. For example, we made sure for every single PD that if it had housing at a certain density, that we could fit all the units with a street system and a park and everything else that was potentially going to be allowed in that PD, and to actually plan those areas and then it was sized. And so that was done over and over again for each of these. You're not seeing that level of planning here. What you're seeing here is a depiction of buffers. So that orange color is a buffer around an ag pond, which is going to probably have to be considered as some kind of a wetlands or other ESHA feature. And then the purple is just, really from staff, is a suggestion for a kind of neighborhood compatibility buffer, staying off of the slope, providing some setback from the adjacent neighborhood, for example, for this first one, which is the Podesta PD. So for each one of these PDs, we considered the 1993 certified document and what the land uses were allowed at that point in time. And we looked at a broader component of master planning, including a look at needs for green infrastructure and hazard mitigation. And I'm just going to click through some of the other schematics while I go through the rest of my notes, so that you can get a sense of what these look like. This one is the South Gateway, otherwise known as the Elsie Smith Estate right now. Other things that we tried to work into the PDs were land uses that people said they were worried about or really wanted to know. For example, where are you going to put assisted living in this town? We don't have an assisted living facility in Half Moon Bay. So there's a couple of the PDs that we thought potentially were well-located and had enough room for it and were compatible to that use, and you'll see that in there. This is nursery men's exchange. We also, this one isn't going to be a good example. This one's a good example of a hazard, though. This PD butts the very high fire severity zone, which is mapped in red. There's a required 100-foot setback to that fire hazard zone. We also have the orange coming down even farther because we have slopes over 30% in the eastern part of that PD, and that's been a city policy really to not develop on slopes over 30%. We also have the 160-foot contour in there somewhere. That's the contour line where we're starting to get really sensitive about visual resources with being very concerned about development up higher than that. This one also has the eastern side of Highway 1's piece of Naples Creek or Roosevelt Creek, which has riparian vegetation on it. I'm going to click to, this is Surf Dunes. This is Venice. I want to find one that has more. It isn't going to be this one. We'll go back. Let's go to Wavecrest. This one has a lot of hatched yellow lines in it. Those parcels are owned by land trusts, either the Coastside Land Trust or Post. And so we considered that ownership when we were looking at the capacity of the PD for development, because the intent of the land trust is to not develop those properties. And so we assume that those lands are not available to be developed in those PDs. Go back a few. This is Venice. This is a good example of a few other planning thoughts that went into the schematics, where you will see correlating policies in each of the PDs. The black arrow, for example, is meant to depict multimodal access, and in this case, Venice Boulevard is a coastal access route. It's currently designated as a coastal access route in your certified LCP, and we would maintain that moving forward. And so we just start trying to really acknowledge it and... And so we just start trying to really acknowledge it and thinking about with the, the purple, which was a staff thought about setting, setting back development from a coastal access route to, to maintain some, some type of a view corridor as you would come, come down Venice towards the beach. The green arrows are meant to show bicycle and pedestrian access, whether it be existing or new, but the intention is to show how this, these layers could have linkages. So for example, on the east side of this particular PD, that would be the Naomi Patrick's Trail. But the, the other arrow that's running through the PD would be a new connection across that should link between Naomi Patrick's Trail and the Coastal Trail with the intent of giving bikes and peds a really comfortable connection that is completely separate from cars and could also serve as a buffer. You know, there's existing uses on the north end of that PD that could very well continue as part of the, the PD land use considerations, equestrian, public recreation, those kinds of things are, are part of the portfolio of appropriate land uses cited for the, the Venice PD in this, in this draft document. So that's what you're looking at. I think this one, Surf Dunes, we're showing a, the concept of needing to really be careful with this point of access. This is hinting at a roundabout. It doesn't have to be a roundabout, but that's trying to acknowledge that this is a priority area where, where the policy designates that access is, must be addressed. We're also showing some right-in, right-out ideas here. This is a tsunami inundation area. So you get the idea of, of what's meant to be depicted in a really very graphical way and is just meant to, to help, help the reader get through these. Now, I am prepared to go through each and every one of these in a lot of detail, but I'm not going to do that tonight unless asked to do that by, through public comment and through, through the Chair of the Planning Commission. We're going to try to gauge what, what people are interested in in terms of digging into these. Each one has its own range of land uses, the way that the land uses were cited, the densities, the mixture of land uses. All of that is really important to how they were done. I'm sure we're going to get a lot of feedback, and I think after we get the feedback would be probably a better time for, for staff to go through them. But I don't intend to gloss over them either, so if you want to dig in, we can, we can do that. Oh, the new PDs. Brittany's reminding me that I didn't talk about the new PDs. There are three, I think. This is one. This is Upper Grandview Boulevard and Upper Glencrey. And the reason why it sort of qualified as PD-worthy to us, it doesn't have to be a PD, but it, it met the criteria that we were looking at, which was it has paper lots, paper streets, infrastructure's a challenge, there's ESHA, and there's drainage issues. It has a whole bunch of stuff that really, those are, those are the things that go into master planning. And so that, that is why we, we noted it. And the upper portion of Glencrey is the most viable part of the city's Glencrey and Beechwood properties for development. Really, just about all of the rest of, well, all of Beechwood is in, in wetlands or in wetland buffers practically, and lower part of Glencrey has, has quite a bit more ESHA on it. So that is one new idea. And then I, this one is the Stone Pine Public Facilities and Conservation Corridor PD. This one is 880 Stone Pine. It's, some people know it as the Post property, some people know it as the city's courtyard because the city's courtyard is located at the top of this property. It's currently an urban reserve designation, and we found and confirmed that there is a California red-legged frog breeding pond on this property. So that is over here. It was an ag pond, and it's working brilliantly for the frogs, and they really love having the creek and the dispersal area. And of course, our, our guys in their trucks are, are very low intensity, so they're apparently not harming anything, and then the frogs have access to this as well. So it's just like set up and, and what do you know? So there you go. So read that PD, and you'll see that the primary use of the site is anticipated to need to be a wildlife corridor, and we're hoping to also see if there's still room for some, some public use such as what we have now. And the last one that's new, and I'm sorry that the top is clipped off of this, this is an idea that I'm sure we're going to get a bucket of feedback about. This, we're calling it Dolores. This was part of, I'm trying to remember the name of that subdivision. Ah. Something Bernardo Station. We got it. Okay. The Bernardo Station subdivision. And this is immediately east of Wavecrest. It, again, like that Upper Grandview and Glencrey, it, it passed the test of what we were looking at as being, is this PD viable? Well, it, it has paper lots, paper streets. It does have a couple streets, and it does have some utilities, but it does not have sewer. And it has quite a mix of uses, and we, we identified it as really an interesting location in that it, it has a childcare center and a church and some uses that could really be supportive to the largest neighborhood in town, which is Ocean Colony, which has really a limited, you know, it's hard to get a cup of coffee. If you're going for a walk in Ocean Colony, you know, it's, it's pretty limited in terms of neighborhood services. So we looked at this as having the potential of kind of a neighborhood node with some housing, a little bit higher density, and potentially being a receiver site for transfer of development rights from Wavecrest, which is, of course, has a lot of wetlands and other habitat. We know that that's a big new idea. We expect a lot of people don't like it. We've also heard from some people who do. So let's learn about why so that we can figure out if it's appropriate or not, and we just, thank you. We wanted to highlight those three new things and why we were, why we were contemplating them and pitched them to you. All right. I think I'm almost done. The chapter concludes by addressing non-residential uses, and I don't want to make light of them, but we don't have time to, to dig in. We know we, we want to get to public comment, and we can discuss them more later. But I do want to highlight just one thing, which is visitor-serving commercial. We are showing a new little bit of it down at this corner of Highway One and Miramontes Point Road as kind of a, a south gateway. And then we are showing more of a, a node of visitor-serving commercial off of Wavecrest because it's already, it's already there. You have a hotel and a pub and an RV park, and there's interest in more kinds of camping uses. And in fact, we were looking at part of Wavecrest for potentially having some kind of eco-camping or birding or for bicycling, and that's something that the Coastal Conservancy has even brought to our attention. So it's something for you to explore. It's at the south end of town. The south segment of Highway One has many times less the traffic volume than the north end of, north of 92. Obviously, it all, a lot of it comes together at 92. It doesn't mean this would alleviate traffic concerns, but if we were going to put visitor-serving commercial anywhere, we would encourage it to be where we have less congestion than we do now. So that was the idea of that. And back to reminding everybody in the room that this is a draft. The Planning Commission Subcommittee worked long and hard on this. They agree with a lot of it. I, you know, they're pitching some of it, too. They're, they want to see what the community has to say about a lot of these ideas. We are, we are incredibly open to your input and eager to hear it and, and to keep working on this with you. And we anticipate that we'll be revising it, and we'll be real clear about that process as we go forward. We're ready to turn it over to our Chair and kind of follow your typical process for clarifying questions and getting to public comment as soon as you're able to.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this, thanks to the, to the Subcommittee of the, the Planning Commission working on this. We have a chance now for Planning Commission clarifying questions, recognizing we have a couple new commissioners. There might be a number of clarifying questions. I do also have just a number of speaker cards here as well, so, so maybe if we can keep questions just to those most pertinent, and we can certainly follow up, and as Jill mentioned, there'll be lots of future opportunities for us to commit. So any clarifying questions at this time? Steve?
Yes, thank you. Just, just a couple of quick ones. Jill, the concept of the overlays, is there some implication in that, that, that it's a temporary thing, or, or do you need to be prepared to live with that forever if it's implemented?
The way we've posed it, it's, it's an amendment to your map, and so it's, it's a long-term prospect. We could consider other ways to do it. We'd, we'd want to understand why you might want it to be temporary so that we could figure out how to, how to deal with that.
Thank you. And Brittany, I had one quick question for you, please, on the, you noted that the, our vision of the ag land around Half Moon Bay being different from the county has evolved in recent years. We have smaller farms closer to neighborhoods. What are, what are, are there a couple of changes in policies that that has led to?
Yes, I think we have been really sensitive to land use conflicts. So where there's ag next to neighboring residential areas, we were really conscious about impacts from noise pollution, light pollution, other things that happen on, on farms that aren't typical next to, to residential areas. So we looked at that from a design context as well as needing to build in buffers where we have that opportunity. Jill, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, so that, that is particularly applicable to where we have greenhouses, which is considered an ag use. They're primarily in the horticulture business land use designation, but they're really close to what we have as industrial in, in Half Moon Bay. So a lot of our policies were focused around reducing impacts from light pollution in particular.
That makes sense. Thank you for that.
Any other planning commissioners have any clarifying questions at this time? Jim?
Maybe just one quick one. And that was in our maps of the, of the planned development districts as they were presented in our slide sets tonight, I noticed that there were some, thank you. I noticed that there were some areas that in our natural resources chapter, we identified, I think, as potential habitat, or maybe we had some comments or studies. It looks like we've been careful to be cautious in where we think those might be, and we're going to be waiting for delineations. And I just want to be sure, that's my understanding of where we are, in case that comes up for the public when someone says, hey, we know there's this issue, where is it on that map?
We confirm that. If, if we've mapped it as issue in the natural resources chapter, then you see it there. If it's potential issue, we are not ready to, to show it on these maps.
Great. Rick, did you have a question? Open it up.
Just two comments. I know there's some things that have been written that may appear new, but like the creative approaches to farm worker, teacher, and state parks employees housing. There's precedent for all of this within the city already. I mean, farmers, farm workers live on farms. We have obviously the state parks employees are already living on state property. Just want to confirm that this is, you know, while it's creative, it's based on existing precedent?
I, I think it expands upon what we've, we've done and clarifies it. One of the challenges we, that I think I mentioned with horticulture business and urban reserve, both of those categories allow for employee housing without saying how much, and we, we think that's kind of hard to deal with. And so being a little clearer about it and where it might go is, is advancing the thought. But yes, it's not new to do that. It's not new to have ranger housing. It's new to plan for it in advance and put, put a category down. And it's new on the school sites and some of those other sites that would not allow housing right now, although there's lots of church sites downtown that are not in public facilities districts, they're in mixed-use districts, and they could have housing right now. So it's kind of making it a little more consistent from that perspective for, for the two churches that we have that are public facilities.
I don't have any other questions now.
He prompted one more question, if I might, through the Chair. And that was, I was just going back to the Coastal Act because there's a discussion about priority uses in our, in our draft. And I know in staff's presentation, we talked about trying to find the right words to describe some of the housing overlays, and was it priority housing? Was it workforce housing? You know, we weren't sure what we called it. But I wanted to get a distinction. As I read Coastal Act 30322, that's the section that identifies the sort of hierarchies of, of development in terms of priorities, I was trying to figure out where this housing would fit into that. It looked to me like it was below ag and it was below visitor-serving. So I'm, I'm just trying to be sure I understand how we achieve consistency as we, as we investigate those kind of housing options. Where do you, so the question is where is it, where is this with respect to that priority? That's the question.
I think, I think we're going to want to get back to you with, with a more comprehensive answer. The Coastal Act has changed over time with regards to how it's acknowledged priority housing. That said, your city council wants us to try to have affordable housing designated as a priority use. So we will show you what's included in the Coastal Act and also talk about what our options are in terms of trying to follow council's direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. With that, I'm going to move into our public hearing. So I've got about 11 speaker cards here, so each speaker is given three minutes, so, so keep your comments, keep your comments tight. And with that, the first public speaker is Casey Branscombe.
Didn't expect to be called first, so my three minutes. First of all, I just want to express, I'm Casey Branscombe, Branscombe Farm. I have 74 acres and five parcels in urban reserve in the, in the town up there. And... And I want to appreciate the effort that the staff has gone through to try and, you know, begin the process of understanding what agriculture and rural, you know, commercial uses really are on these big, open, what appear to you to be open parcels. But, you know, the land is how we keep our employees, you know, employed, people fed. You know, it's what I live on. So I want to applaud the, specifically this idea about really working with us around how do we get our employees living on our farms. You know, I do have some farm labor housing at Branscombe Farms, but I have four employees that for 10, 14 years now have been commuting over the hill from Redwood City. I would love to see them on the farm. You know, the animals that we take care of are 24 by 7. They don't go to sleep on Christmas Day and, you know, let you be with your family. You really do need to live in proximity to the equines that you're caring for. And our guys, our starting wage is $17.50 an hour. We go up to 28 plus profit sharing. If you've been with us for a long time and you're really, really competent at your job, none of them can afford to live in Half Moon Bay unless I provide the housing as part of the farm. So I really appreciate that. My biggest concern is when I look at all the rules and the issue this and the view corridor and everything that you all want to do to kind of keep looking at Branscombe Farm, I don't know where you're going to fit it, you know? That doesn't have one rule or another that says, well, you can't build it there. I mean, it took me 14 years to build a house for me to live in, you know? So I just hope you'll work with us on where we put it so that, you know, we do have places. Plus, the, I guess, the other big comment I'd like to make, and this is on behalf of myself and some of the others that run ag businesses in the town, you know, that 30241.5 that says, you know, you need to have a point of view about economic feasibility of agricultural operations. I'll share my tax return. I mean, you know, come look at our businesses. Find out how we make money because it isn't just one thing, you know? You can't just say, oh, you're going to do horse breeding in Terry. You're going to just grow green beans and have your farm stand. If you're going to do this for 20 years, you've got to have a flexible point of view about how do we evolve those things. And I love these supplemental uses idea and I get the 20% and that's all reasonable to me. But let's make sure it really works, that it's not just lip service, that it's not just, you know, kind of somebody's great academic idea. Come learn how we actually run these businesses and how we survive. Because, you know, we're kind of the last people standing. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Roy Salum.
Hi. I have a number of comments. I've read carefully through both chapters. And I think it would be more appropriate if I write up my specific suggestions and then send them to our planning director and she can dispense those to you. However, I have some general comments. And first of all, on Chapter 2, I like the Dolores PD. I like the idea of having transfer development rights to, from the Wavecrest folks to make them whole. They've been out there for decades hoping to do something with their land and they've been orphaned for years. And I've attended many meetings over the decades where they've gotten up and they've said, you know, we want to do something with our land. And providing a mechanism for them to move their rights to someplace else, I think that's a good idea worth exploring. I want to say something about Chapter 4. I think that with climate change, the impacts of erosion and sea intrusion and some of these other, these aspects that we're concerned about may be more longer term. What will be more immediate is a disruption to our food supply chain. We've already seen fires in Mendocino and we have drought and we have the snowpack changes. And I think that we may need to grow food locally. And farm-to-table may be not just a statement of fashion or choice, but a necessity. So in the policies, perhaps you should consider a rapid conversion of urban, of open space reserve lands and urban reserve, open space reserve lands and urban reserve lands into agricultural production. It may be something that is justified by rapid rises in the price of, or increases in the price of food. So I just submit that to you, that that may, we may have to be nimble as far as getting lands into production as quickly as possible. I realize you take the long view and that's great. But I'm a reader of history and I know many of you are. And sometimes changes come really sudden. So that's something you may want to consider doing. I think it's a really great idea to move visitor-serving and recreational uses to the southern part of town where the impacts of traffic and the neighborhoods is far less. I think that's great. I love the idea, as a Boy Scout, I love the idea of more camping spaces south of town. I can't say enough good things about that. So I'll send Jill some comments later.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, written comments always welcome, so recognize you can absolutely get in more detail there.
I'll run spell check in advance, so, thank you, thank you very much.
Let me try not to boom across the mic like I did last time. The slide you put up about the average monthly payment for houses, $45, $36 a month, turns into $15,000 a month income, which means two people working, which means where do they find that job here in town? I think they find it over the hill. They're stuck on the road at 7:00 AM in the morning. There's no way to get away from that. We are, I'll say it, a bedroom community. But I found a problem in your document under land use planning framework. The city council said traffic is one of our concerns along with housing. But here it says, recognizing that infrastructure is at or near capacity and expanding it, especially the roadway network, will be more detrimental than beneficial. Just strike that. Try and work with what is. And that is, everyone's over the hill to get the money to come back here to keep the town funded. The idea that some kind of mass transit network takes us over the hill and everyone has a kumbaya moment in San Mateo as they switch buses and then go on to wherever they're going to work at these jobs that make $15,000 a month, that's not going to work for this planning document. So there was the inconsistency. Please address it in your discussions and reviews. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Judy Taylor.
Good evening. And I can't, very exciting to hear staff is looking at ways to do sensible housing. That's just really, really good news. The altar I worship at is pragmatism. And one of the problems when you talk about lot retirement and transfer of development rights, when we get out into the real world, that is money that is going into a new house. And the new house doesn't get to sell for $30,000 more because you've paid $30,000 to acquire lots and retire them. So you are impacting affordability when you do these kinds of programs. That's not necessarily to say that you shouldn't, but please be aware there's no free rides with that. In terms of affordable housing, it would be really nice to look at ownership as well as rental housing. And I don't know how you incorporate that into the document, but that is a really good idea. And also to look at equity share rather than deed restrictions. There's a concept that happens with people when they know that they own 2/3 of the house. They keep 2/3 in their mentality. When there's a deed restriction and they find the end that they have to pay back 30% to somebody, it's a different dynamic in how they make the decision whether to move on and release that property to somebody else or whether to sell it. None of the downtown problems are going to get fixed unless you fix parking, so please keep that in mind. PDs are a great idea when you have one or two owners. When you have multiple owners, PDs become a nightmare and they basically don't ever get developed. So if you're thinking you want these properties developed and it's an area that does have a lot of owners, you're basically not going to see that property developed as long as there is that multiple owner situation. Yay on the categorical exemptions, please do that. Please take this opportunity to make the zoning consistent with the underlying subdivisions. And to the earlier speaker, and if you've heard me talk, you've heard me say, we're not going to fix any of our problems until we put jobs where the houses already are. The emphasis in this document is about housing and about housing development. There is still a lot of antipathy in this community to housing development. And we need to figure out ways to get those jobs here that are paying $150,000 a year. And we've got the land to do it. We just need to have the political will to do it. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, David Powell.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussions here tonight about housing. I just want to throw in a fact. There is, in addition to the no assisted living that Jill mentioned, there's no senior housing except subsidized senior housing. And I don't know if that belongs in the general, in the land use plan, but I just wanted to get that fact out there for everybody. My primary reason to come here and talk was to point out the item in the Chapter 2 on page 24. It addresses the guidance for development of places in the coastal area. I assume that most of the discussion in there really is applying to the planned development, PDs as you've been calling them. So there is guidance on page 24 that says, "Commercial developments would have priority over private residences for any development in a coastal zone." I believe this priority favoring commercial over residential is wrong, does not serve the needs of the Half Moon Bay residents, and that should be removed. So I encourage the Planning Commission to remove that bias that's stated in that section so that equal consideration would be given to both residential and commercial development in those areas. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Lenny Roberts. And Lenny, I note I have two speaker cards for me here for the different chapters. It's only one item on the agenda, so in the interest of fairness, I'm going to keep you to the three minutes.
Well, they're in separate categories on the agenda, so I thought maybe you were going to call them in different times. I'll do them both together in three minutes. And I'm going to hopefully be able to communicate some of these more details with the, we'd like to work with the staff on some of the more, you know, specific details. But sort of as a high level, Lenny Roberts speaking for committee for Green Foothills. We've been involved in coastal planning, both personally and as an organization, since the Coastal Act was passed. So one, just so we get it, the Coastal Act priority, under the Coastal Act, the priority uses of private land are, number one, agriculture; number two, coastal-dependent industry; number three, visitor-serving commercial recreation; and number four, residential. Housing is the lowest priority of those four. Affordable housing was in the Coastal Act from 1976 until 1981, but then the legislature repealed affordable housing from the Coastal Act. So it isn't there at all. So in order to make this work with the Coastal Commission approval process, which is another big part of this process, we are very supportive of the idea of the priority residential overlay concept. We think it would be really a good idea to name it a little bit more specifically and call it something like Priority Local Coastal Workforce Residential Overlay so that it would be related to these other priority uses like agriculture and visitor-serving. And I think that would then enable the Coastal Commission to find that it was an approvable overlay. We think it should be located, well, there's a lot of details which I won't go into, but the other, some people have already commented on this and it's kind of interesting that, you know, we have the, I guess, the mid-coast area as well as Half Moon Bay has a surplus of housing over, housing over employed residents. And the county is having to do a cumulative traffic, a study of the cumulative traffic impacts of residential development in the entire mid-coast urban area, including Half Moon Bay. And this comprehensive transportation management plan is expected to recommend policies to mitigate for new residential development. And it will have significant adverse impacts because so many people commute. So priority local workforce residential housing, which is appropriately conditioned and enforced, could be an effective mitigation for those cumulative impacts. So going to the agriculture policies, I just want to, you know, I think it's already been stated, but there is very, very strong public support for maintaining open space and compatible uses, including agricultural uses, part of the small-town character and the visual quality and the history of Half Moon Bay. We do have a lot of comments specifically on this chapter, so we will make them known to Jill and Brittany. And you're going to hear some more, I'm sure, as we go along.
I don't, um...
Okay, it's all right.
You know, I don't want to get into the habit of yielding time. I know staff will welcome working with Lenny and getting their feedback. And of course, again, written comments is always welcome. So just don't want to keep with the process here. Next speaker, George Mutif.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been to one of these meetings and I wanted to come to this one to catch up on where we are with the LCP update, which I have an interest in. And part of that, you guys have been very, very helpful so far. In fact, I think I have a little too much. I'm going to have to go home and digest half of it just to understand it again. Then I'll have better questions. But I notice, or I'm anxious to learn more about the affordable housing element, which anytime you talk about building, any development, the very first concern that comes out of anyone's mouth is resources, which is a legitimate concern. Part of those resources is traffic, which is a very legitimate concern around here. And I'd love to hear more about it if you guys have any thoughts or anybody that has any more thoughts on what we can do to reduce it. I realize there's no magic bullet. But affordable housing has been on this town's agenda for decades. And the city of Half Moon Bay has had their rear end chewed more than once or twice or thrice by the state over this very issue. And affordable housing, while it's a very nice collection of words, needs to be clarified specifically to what is affordable. When someone has to make $150,000 or $175,000 or $200,000 a year and they qualify for affordable housing, I got to tell you, I scratched my head a little bit on that one. I understand it's very expensive to live here, but I'd be very interested in... I understand it's very expensive to live here, but I'd be very interested in learning more about, and if I can help in any way, happy to provide that to get real affordable housing here for people that just don't meet the majority of this community's income and fiscal stature. Thank you very much for all you're doing and thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Next speaker, Tom Carey. And if you could please just make sure you're speaking nice and close into the microphone there, both for us up here and also for our viewers at home.
Thank you very much, Tom Carey. And I'd like to thank staff for a very well put-out document. It's voluminous, it's going to take a while to digest and read. Just have two comments. One is on the PD zoning, especially the one on Dolores. I'm not in favor of the PD zoning for the reason that it gives too much power to one developer to control what infill lot owners have today. I'm an R1B1 zoning. I think we've had it over forty years. And there's a lot of areas in this city we, you know, we haven't gone into, but that's one we're looking at. It gives too much power to the big developer that we didn't find for fifty years. And when you go look at Al Seis Lorraine, when we got that developed, and I think we had about twelve lots, it was done by Assessment District. Now, some people didn't like the assessment because, you know, there were, there were some that lost their properties, but that's a pretty good development, the way I look at it. I don't know, you know, I think Al Seis Lorraine is one to look at, and that's basically my thought on that. Number two is on the, the down zoning on the, what do you call it, the Ocean Shore, not Ocean Shore, West Beach or the PD on that? The one by Poplar and...
West of Railroad.
Yeah, west of railroad. I want you to check your city records done back in nineteen, before this twenty-year plan, and check what the city promised those owners that had those lots. And I want you to, before you open all this up, read what's in your records. The city council said that land could be, you know, you wait your time, you're going to have your chance. So before you downzone it, I hope you take a good look. It should be in your files. And I also support the building of lots that are on substandard lots. I think there's a room for people to have a thousand-square-foot house or ten-fifty-square-foot home and for people to live here, firemen, teachers, for people to work in town. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Ferrera.
Good evening, commissioners. Well, there's really quite a bit here, and I will say that it yet puzzles me as to how the community is going to get involved in this because there's so much here. And I, I've been to these workshops and every one I've been to has come across to me as the worst way to involve the community because it's usually a collection of special interests rather than the community. But let me just go on. In this development chapter, there's a mention there about how it has to be consistent with the housing element. No, that's upside down. This is the coastal zone. The local coastal program is an implementation of the Coastal Act. The housing element has to be consistent with the LCP, not the other way around. Especially this housing element that landed on a city council, two-hundred-and-forty pages as part of a seven-hundred-and-sixty-page staff report, okay? It didn't get a whole lot of looks. I was there, I saw it. There's quite a bit in there that would need to be changed, really, to be consistent with the Coastal Act. Regarding what we're doing here, I agree with everything that Lenny said, especially trying to, for workforce housing, defining it that way because putting our workers in proximity to where they work meets the SEQA goals of reducing VMT as well as providing housing for people that really need it. I think some of the larger commercial interests in town would be, to whatever degree it would make sense to them, would be supportive of this. On the PDs, I do want to remind you now, on the one that's east of Grandview, that the Bolsetica decision in the late nineteen nineties said that you cannot fill a wetland for housing under the Coastal Act. And that includes the road to service housing. And I'm kind of familiar with that area, and I think you're chasing butterflies, okay? It's not, it's not going to work. There's just so much here that's all fighting to get out of my head, but I do think that, I think that was mine. Okay, I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next speaker, John Callen.
I didn't come prepared to talk tonight, but I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. I'm just looking at all this work that you've done and all the patience that you've had, certainly to listen to the public, and I just want to, I really appreciate it, and I want to thank you for both. And it's exciting to see the PDs discussed again in these meetings. I don't think they've been discussed for a long, long time. And, and there is a housing crisis right now, so it's, it's time to listen to it. I'm president of San Mateo Land Exchange, and the company is one of these groups that owns approximately three hundred lots at the end of Redondo Beach Road, which is colloquially referred to today as North Wavecrest. Plans for the development of that property is dated back to the seventies, forty years ago. It was approved for residential and coastside commercial recreational by the city, by the Coastal Commission, and by the Coastal Conservancy. And I just want to point out a couple inconsistencies, which I'll follow up by letter. I noticed that we're going from nine-hundred-and-twelve dwelling units down to a hundred-and-forty-two, and that sounds steep. There seem to be arbitrary limits on the development line that don't follow the old plans or the old proposals of the Coastal Commission or the Conservancy. For example, the old rule was no residential structures west of Miramone's Point Road extension. And if I read the new notations correctly, it says no residential structures west of Park Avenue. Well, just south of Redondo Beach Road, that wipes out twenty-five acres of developable land. And I would assume at least another hundred acres to the north. Again, we're in a housing crisis. Also, I don't understand the distinctions between why you want commercial development off Wavecrest Road and residential development off Redondo Beach Road, whereas in the past there's always been a swath of both, covering both sections. You know, and once again, I heard it said prior, you need to read the records. I mean, the city has been detailing development on this property and, and since the eighties and nineties, has made a lot of other promises to the property owners there. So read, you should read the records. We look forward to working with the city and doing something great on the property and, and doing a win-win, combining properties for trails and grants for parks and access. And coastside recreation and residences, they belong on the coast side. The closer to the ocean, the better, so more people can enjoy them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jules Soffer. Boarding houses is what I really like to talk about. Boarding houses screw up an R1 neighborhood. They screw it up in a couple of ways. First, there are an awful lot of cars that are parked all over, around, around neighbors' houses. Boarding houses should be addressed somehow by the city. They need to be gotten out of the R1 neighborhoods. It's, it's, it's a, it's a problem. They should be legalized somewhere where they're not conflicting with the neighbors. Second, the dump. The dump is causing a problem on ninety-two. If you want to make the commute a little bit better, close the dump during the day. San Francisco had their dump open at night. Why can't this dump be open at night? It's a San Mateo County deal, but at least the city could be putting pressure on the county to have the dump open at night. Originally, when the dump opened, they stayed out of our commuter times with their trucks, and that got washed out somehow or another. Well, it ought to be reintroduced. I think, I think a little bit of talk with the county there might be helpful, even, well, I'll leave it at that. That's the dump. Substandard lots. Yeah, the substandard lots are helpful if they're built on with small, single-story houses. I like them. I don't like the fact that the people building on these substandard lots are using the whole twenty-five-foot street frontage as a, as a driveway. I think that's unfair. I mean, I've got eighty-five or ninety feet on the street. If I did, if I put all of that as a driveway, I think that my neighbors rightfully would be screaming bloody murder. And I don't see why a twenty-five-footer should have a twenty-feet or twenty-five-foot driveway. They could have a ten-foot driveway and they could still give a parking spot to all of us. Thank you, those are my three comments.
Thank you very much. The last speaker card I have is for David Beaumont.
Good evening, staff and commissioners.
If you could please make sure you're speaking into the microphone and...
Thank you.
It's on, it's a light green.
Pick it up.
You're good.
Okay. I wanted to commend staff on very innovative concepts and approaches to affordable housing. I was very enthusiastic to hear these suggestions and...
If you could please just make sure to get right in there, yeah.
I hope that enthusiastic discussion ensues and a result greater than the sum of its parts is the result regarding affordable housing. This is, these non-form-based concepts have been around in planning circles for many years, and it's really exciting to see this come here to, to Half Moon Bay. It's being implemented in a number of forward-looking jurisdictions, and I think these are excellent ideas to start a discussion at, across the city level and, and make new forms of affordable housing come in, come into being. Just very briefly, wanted to touch on one PD, that's the Bernardo Station. For some reason, it's called Dolores right there, but it's actually a historic relation to that. While the proposal for the PD, can you still hear me there? Recognizes the area's beneficial potential for the southern part of the city, I would instead encourage taking a look at utilizing the existing framework paired together with the overlay tool. The overlay tool is a fine-tuning instrument, and it seems that a lot of the goals that are suggested under the proposal of the PD could be implemented using that finer tool rather than sort of the top-heavy PD instrument, which is not just top-heavy, but kind of a blunt instrument to achieve the same desired and very salutary goals that are given by staff. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, that was the last speaker card I have, so seeing no other speakers, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. As mentioned, I know staff's very interested in, in receiving all of your comments, so, so please feel free to submit them in writing. We're interested, the commission, and I think there's going to be a lot more opportunities in the future for, for additional comments. So thank you, thank you all for those. So Jill, before we sort of have discussion here, did you want to provide any responses there? And then if you could also, I guess, maybe, there's a lot of information here. I think the one thing that I agree with, with a number of the speakers is need to dive into a lot of this information, so maybe if you have some guidance to the commission on specifically what sort of directions or comments might be most helpful at this point.
I didn't anticipate your question quite like that, so I need, I need a moment to actually chew on it. We really did appreciate the range of public comment tonight. We heard several folks say they would like to talk to staff or give us some written comments. We invite all of you to do that. We are, we try to make ourselves available. We have been really busy doing this process, but we are still meeting with people and we want to keep that up. For the commission, I'm really hoping that you can get through the different chunks of this document. If you can spend some time on town center, for example. You've, you've talked about it quite a bit in the past, and in fact, that's where we got those different portions of it delineated. The PDs, if you have a desire to have a presentation that would cover each of them, some of them, we can do that at a future meeting if you'd like to. One of the things that I think would be really helpful tonight is there are updated policies that apply to all of the PDs. That's part of the land use plan now. A number of those policies were brought forward, but almost all of them have been revised, they've been refreshed, and they've been added on to quite substantially. And in particular, we've, we've added a few things about planning good neighborhoods. Instead of the word development, we like to think of neighborhoods and community and see if that's ringing true for you. But I, I would really need to hear a little bit more from your discussion to, to answer your question better. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I was just trying to get if you had any specific sort of things you were looking at, but I think you work fine. So with that, to the commission. Commissioner Benjamin.
I'd like to take a crack at your question. You know, when we were, so Rick and I have had the opportunity to work on this for months, so when we, you know, the closest thing I can compare it to is like going to Sunday School and studying Torah or, you know, Bible study or Bhagavad Gita or Quran or whatever. You know, you, you pick a little piece of it and you chew on it and figure out what its ramifications are, and you take it bit by bit and then think about how they, how they fit together. And I think that the public will learn more from interactive dialogue. You know, that's how these conversations work best when you're a member of the public and if you're new to the document as a member of the Planning Commission, how, how it works well. And I, I appreciate former Mayor Ferrera's comments about the, the challenges of workshops. We've also had subcommittee meetings. I think when Mike was, Mike was a member of the, chairing the Planning Commission, we had some transportation or circulation subcommittee conversations, and they were really, really informal. They were unstructured, and we just sat at a table and, you know, we had a, we had a general topic, and people came in and we, we had a conversation. And in my experience, you know, we probably didn't cover a lot in those meetings, but what we did cover, I felt like there was a, there was an exchange of information and perspective. And sometimes we made people happy and sometimes they went away, maybe more ticked off than when they came in, I don't know. But I do think that in terms of structuring these, my, my advice is to try to create as, create some unstructured time so that the conversations can flow freely and allow the fact that it's going to be an inefficient process because communication and comprehension is an inefficient process. Turning to some of the comments that we heard from the public, I thought that there was a, so first of all, thank you for all of them. I thought that some of... I thought that some of them were, that had a quality of a specific, a specific idea that they wanted to integrate into our planning process going forward. For example, dealing with the dump, as Mr. Soffer pointed out, or what we should do with respect to the width of driveways. I'm not taking a position in favor of or against. My sense is that the level of specificity might be a little too detailed for the policy document, but if we can boil it up and find a statement that says, "One of the things that makes the town livable is a certain level of circulation, an ability to get, you know, our vehicle to capacity or our travel time ratios that correspond to meaningful distances over the hill that will capture our commute," I think those are worthwhile policy ideas that we might want to incorporate. I hope that later, when we get to the zoning issues, we can deal with, or the subdivision issues, we can get down to some of those specific illustrations. But I'm thinking that there may be other examples in the comments that we can boil up that would be worthwhile. I was really encouraged by the public's response to the notion of priority workforce housing because frankly, we had no idea what was going to happen when we put that idea out. It may be really crazy, and there are probably people who aren't here tonight who will tell us that it's really crazy. And I think developing that idea a little more firmly based on the feedback I heard tonight was encouraging. When I talked to members of the public about this earlier, they were looking at the map, and they were struck by the fact that a lot of the school district land is hatched and none of the parkland is hat, you know, the state parks land is hatched, and we have this idea. And there's good reasons because we don't know exactly where it is. But they were looking for something more consistent. They couldn't figure out why, in one case where we were advocating workforce house and we got it, and in other cases, it wasn't marked, but it was sort of an asterisk in the conversation and showed up in policy. One comment that came up just once, but I thought it was really well-placed with respect to this kind of housing, was when it's presented as an idea, it comes up as an item that we, you know, that we're told it's worked in a lot of places. And I don't know, I'm not disputing that. I think it probably does, and I hope so. But human nature is to learn more from our mistakes than we do from our successes. So, I hope it doesn't sound like I'm trying to throw cold water on the idea. I am not. But I want to learn where well-intentioned efforts to provide workforce housing in communities has blown up. And I want to understand why so we can climb that experience curve and avoid making mistakes that are needless, right? I have other comments, but I feel like I'm taking up too much airtime already, so I'll stop here and come back after other people have had their say. Thank you.
I echo a lot of Jimmy's comments, and I've had a little more time to read through this document than most, these documents than most people. So, I would encourage you to reach out to your planning commissioners. I know many people here have done that. We've had conversations about projects and policies. I really recommend it. Sorry to inundate my new commissioners to this policy, but it's a good way to get to practical pretty quickly. In particular, Ms. Branscombe, I think we're very practical about housing. We're trying to find practical solutions that make sense. This isn't theoretical or academic exercise for us. We really want this to be sustainable for farmers in the long term and for agricultural uses. So, city staff is very supportive of getting practical, so I would encourage you to come up with some proposals, some plans, and be very specific around, hey, this works, this doesn't work. I can't emphasize the professionalism that we have here on city staff. I agree with the feedback about classifying workforce housing as local coastal workforce housing or something like that. I think the concept kind of speaks to what we're trying to accomplish and certainly agree with. It'd be great to learn from other people's mistakes. There are many things that have been called out, like substandard development, some specific design things, I think have largely been addressed with a lot of the design guidelines, but if we, that are already in place. But if we haven't addressed those, then we can always take another crack at them. And again, Jules would love to get your specific feedback about the project that you're talking about so that as we look at things in the future, we can address that. I do want to call out that while there's a lot in here, much of what has been put in writing is based on the practical realities of development. If there's an ESHA, you can't build on an ESHA. If there's a tsunami inundation zone, which we hadn't even mapped before, it's not practical to put housing there. So, I think we're laying out what have been practical realities for a long time, and there's going to be some, a balancing act that has to be struck there. But it's, these are, in effect, what we've been living with for a while, and I think it's good for us to have a real conversation about that. And so, I think that's something that city staff welcomes and would like folks to look at, you know, look at this and give us real clear feedback on it. I'm going to end my comments. Traffic is the number one thing that we've been told is a problem in our community that needs to be addressed, like the number one thing over and over and over again. So, it is a concern. So, things like workforce housing in town, ways to get more connected communities with bikes and trails, those are all important parts of what we're doing. So, we take the whole traffic concern very seriously. So, that's it for now.
Great. Steve?
Thank you. I'd like to echo the thanks from up here for everybody who gave their time and energies to be here and comment on this draft effort. It's, I'm struck by the fact that there's about 12,000 citizens in Half Moon Bay and 12 people commented tonight, so you are one in a thousand. So, thank you for that effort. Rick kind of stole my thunder at the end there because as I've been grappling with all the details of this, as a new commissioner, the concept of traffic and what we can do about it is always at the front of my mind. I know that the plan has a very articulate vision statement that includes the concept of, "We want to gracefully accommodate a growing number of visitors to the coast," which I think is a wonderful, a wonderful goal for us to have, but it obviously is not an easy thing. And I'm, I just am committed, and I know we all are, to continuing to work on that in this, in this planning effort going forward.
So, I thank you all for, who spoke, for coming. I really appreciated hearing your comments. And at this point, I guess my, in answer to your, some of your questions, I had been, as I was trying to absorb a lot of this very quickly, one of the things that came out for me had to do with the priority uses, and I heard some of that in the comments as well. And I think part of it is understanding, being very clear in understanding what are those laid out in the Coastal Act to, because as you work through the policies, sometimes it's a little, you get a little lost in the weeds about, wait, is this a, this is a priority connection for a priority use and things like that, that I found rather difficult. And then I also worried about that when we were thinking about this, the, what we call the priority residential overlay. And so, I do also feel really like that, that concept of a workforce overlay. I think that's great, and I just don't want to see us get into kind of a confusion about priority uses versus, I like the idea. I think it was Lenny who brought up, you know, let's tie that to those priority uses because I do think that's a really important, for lack of a better word, priority for our community. So, but I do think that in, for instance, on page 24 of chapter four, excuse me, chapter two, the, it kind of very quickly lays out the priority uses, but it's not, you know, you don't realize how important those are actually until later on, you go, wait a minute, where were those? So, that's just something that I think I heard a lot in the comments, some of the confusion that I had. And then I had thoughts about some of the more specific related, you know, policies related to the town center, but I don't necessarily know that they're, you know, detailed, they're perhaps a little bit too detailed for this level of conversation. But I would love to talk with folks. I would really appreciate folks coming and having a chance to hear what you have to say in more depth, so please do that, and I would very much appreciate that. And I think at this point, those are the, my comments.
Thank you very much. I'd echo a lot of what folks say, and I'm really happy to see, I think, the focus on workforce housing and the affordable housing and the inclusion of that and getting creative. I think the overlay zone is a really nice way to address that, and it really, it gives the property owners a lot of options and choices to do what works best for them. So, I think that's, that's a really nice approach. And I think a lot of the, I attended a couple of the Housing for All meetings, and I think there's just a lot of good creative solutions from the ADUs to addressing some of the non-conforming lots, and then with this, with this, with the workforce housing proposal, I think there's a really good opportunity for us to address a number of different, different aspects of housing affordability in this town. So, and I've actually been, been on the commission for a little while now and have seen a couple of the houses on substandard lots that I really had some questions, maybe a little bit skeptical on how they would come out, and one of them, just a block or two down the street from me, and I gotta say, they've come out really nice and have been really nice additions to the neighborhoods and infill lots in Arleada Park. And I think that focus on that area is really, you know, spot on where we should be, where we should be focusing things. So, as mentioned, I'm, I do think it would be potentially valuable, or at least having a discussion about diving into, you know, some of these particular PUDs, especially for the public, sort of understanding some of the intricacies and constraints in some of those areas. So, I'm going to save some of my comments on some of those for now, and at some point, yeah, I think that would be a good conversation to have, to go in and really look at the decisions behind each of those. Rick, did you have something? Go for it.
So, the concept of town center, as you've articulated it, it makes sense. It works. It's, John Evans has often called out the concept of the commercial downtown, and I think you've really nailed, you know, what that is. And you've addressed the fact that we have this area on the southern end of the downtown core that needs to be addressed and needs to be thought through. So, I think it's actually, it's good progress, and you've given us a language we can use to talk about it constructively. So, I do like the whole concept of town center as it's been defined. I would take into account the feedback we've gotten from the proposed Dolores PD. I think there's, and I would invite members of the community who live in that area to, or who own property in that area, to provide their specific feedback. The intention here is to bring the whole neighborhood into the rest of Half Moon Bay. It is a part of our community. It feels like it's part of the county. You don't have sewer, like it's definitely something, an area that could be improved upon, so would encourage the community to provide feedback on that. In terms of some of the comments about promises that have been made and commitments that are either maybe in writing, maybe in public record, and maybe not, we have a new legal team. We have new, largely new city staff. I think there's only one planning commissioner who's been here more than 20 years ago or more than 15 years ago, and he hasn't been here the whole time. I would encourage you, if you really want to work with the city, to bring up the supporting documents, the commitments that you feel have been made, and let's have a conversation about it because it's, that's how we get to a real dialogue. So, would encourage folks to bring those to the table. And I know there are a lot of discussions that have happened, but it would be helpful. The city has had some challenges in understanding what commitments are, and we've spent a lot of time just talking about the Jenna Lane properties around commitments that were made and things that weren't followed through with. So, would appreciate the, and again, things in writing really help as opposed to just verbalized conversations. So, those are the comments I have.
Okay, another round. So, one, one concept that I think, it didn't come up in conversation, but I think it's worth talking about for the public to sort of highlight, is that we inherited a plan that had some challenges. You know, that, we see the interspersal of neighborhoods and open space as an asset, a unique quality of the town. It represents a challenge as well because of the additional period, you know, areas that have to be crossed, the impacts on infrastructure, drainage, connectivity of habitat, or the threat of disconnecting habitat as a result of development. It's, it's a challenge for us to plan beyond the constraints that came from a sort of short-sighted approach to planning that went into our current general, our current LCP. It's good, but it was, it was focused on a build-out that we're pretty close to right now. In contrast to that model, we're trying to build a view of Half Moon Bay that goes beyond 2040. We're trying to see out to what build-out looks like, and that's different, and it's important for people to understand because otherwise, we're simply consuming resources, you know, road capacity, drainage capacity, water, land, and we're kicking the problem of how we manage to make the city work down the road to some future place. So, as you're reading the document, I encourage you to adopt that longer mindset and ask, what is the long-term, what does, what does Half Moon Bay look like when it's built out? Not just 2040. What does it look like when it's actually built out? And help us out if you have some better ideas. We would like to hear them. Another aspect of this development chapter that I think is worth calling out is the text that discusses specific plans and precise plans because precise plans was new language for me, and it might be new for you. Maybe you're, you're old, hadn't familiar with it. But we're trying hard to create an opportunity for the community to really plan. We've had instances in the past, sometimes in that too recent past, where we feel like maybe some of the decisions didn't quite work out the way we, we had hoped they would. But it remains to be seen for most of the big development projects in town, whether we can get the kind of plans that make that development and that PD fit in and work out. In my mind, that's what a plan development really should do. It should fit in and work out. And the help we get in establishing what that means is going to be really valuable. So, I hope you'll, when you read through these things, that will be a big help for us to get your insight into how that would work. There was a conversation about the transferable development rights or transfer of development rights. I actually don't know what the right acronym is. But in addition to moving development out of places where we think it is not in the long-term interest of the community to develop and into places where we think densification of development could make the town a more livable space, I noticed that Senator Weiner has proposed density being transferred into high-density commute areas. So, for example, along BART lines or along Caltrain lines. And if there's a way that we can move some of the development intensities into those areas independently of what we choose to densify within our town, you know, areas, independently of what we choose to densify within our town, you know, to the extent that Half Moon Bay is called on by the Coastal Act and for the benefit of our businesses here, to be a visitor-serving resource, a mecca to beat the summer heat, it would be nice if they helped us by letting us transfer some of the development that challenges our ability to do that. So I think that there's a nexus and a basis for planning that. And I'd like to make sure that that finds its way into our document where we can. I thought that Mr. Salome's comment about the need to be flexible with agriculture was really interesting. I spend a lot of time working on the hazards element of the local coastal program update, and I realize that's not on the agenda, so I don't want to dwell on it much. But what he was describing was kind of a hazard, and it's, you know, we talk about hazards like flood, or fire, or tsunami, or the dam at Pillar Cito's Lake breaks, or a mudslide, or, I don't know, you know. But this is an example, what Roy mentioned was an example of a sort of slower-moving, but very serious kind of hazard. And it struck me that that concept might have a home in that part of the LCP update. And I thank you for the thought. Let me see, I think that covered most of the big ones. I will just say in passing that when I heard that, it reminded me that the, and looking at the planned development districts and the fire hazard zones that were coming down from the hillsides, reminded me that our ability to warn our citizens and help them understand what hazard we might be facing, you know, whether it's coming from the water or it's coming from Pillar Cito's Creek, or it's coming from fires or whatever, we need a more informed system of communicating to our public and not forcing everybody to think, oh, my gosh, something's wrong, I need to leave, but I don't know where and I don't know where to go. Because if you think it's a tsunami and you're getting up when in fact it's a fire and it's coming down the hills, all the people coming up from west of Highway One are just saturating the capacity of Highway One to allow people who need to leave to leave. And similarly, if there's a tsunami, but it's only affecting areas below, I don't know, 30 feet, if we put out a broadcast alert that says there's a tsunami alert, if you're, it doesn't matter where you are, if you're within the sound of that siren, you're probably going to feel the need to move. So having a smarter system seems to me to be particularly relevant to some of the areas that are planned development districts that are exposed to these hazards. So the nexus I'm drawing to the agendized topic is just that it's planned development, and it needs to be, it needs to be managed for hazards as well as other things. And it might be that some of that will lay over to other parts of the city as well. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, with that.
Actually, I didn't want to.
Go for it, sir.
So one other, one thing, and this had to do with broadly the PDs, the general policies about the PDs. So one of the things that I saw, I saw kind of a range of kind of more general policies, but then also it gets pretty specific, and it depends in part on which PDs. But also, in the actual, the general policies, there were certain things that were specified, and I wanted to have a better understanding of kind of where those came from. I'm not saying I didn't like them, or didn't, it's just in part, I didn't necessarily understand. So that was one, an example might be the amount of the PD set aside for stormwater infrastructure. I'm not, you know, I think that's good, it's important to have that in the planning process. I just wanted to understand the rationale behind kind of some of the numbers. So that's something that, as I was reviewing this, was coming to mind for me in terms of feedback.
Okay, so no further comments. We can close the study session item. Do you need any, you don't need any specific motion from us?
We just want to take a minute to remind everyone that we're intending to have, we're actually blocking out the second of the Planning Commission's monthly meetings for study sessions and taking regular business items on the first of their meetings. They meet the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So second Tuesdays, they will continue to see projects. And on the fourth Tuesdays, we'd like to keep working on the land use plan, which is a pace that staff is hoping we can keep up with, with what's been put out. But we owe you a few more things, and we've been working on the build-out analysis. It's very detailed, and we're hoping to have that before your next study session. We are working on the Public Works chapter. We're queuing up a traffic study, water demand, and sewer capacity analyses. And so, just so you know, we're still chugging along, doing these things. And reiterating that your input is welcome. We do have all of these documents posted on the planhmby.org website, and we're happy to keep working on this. So thank you. This was constructive for us. I recognize there's quite a range of comments in terms of how much detail they had. So we're going to go back and study our notes and really think about how to structure your next study session. And if you have feedback about that, please email me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one comment, if I may. And this could probably be covered in our communications, but this is the item on the agenda. I think it might be helpful for us to kind of regroup as a commission in some way, maybe as we think about, do we do an offsite or do a retreat? But just to kind of ground everybody in the same basic facts, maybe get a little update from Heather on like guidance from a big policy perspective. Would just encourage us to kind of think through, how do we get the new commission members up to speed and then get everybody on the same page?
I agree.
We appreciate the suggestion. We have a date set that we know for the council's retreat, and we find that it's really helpful to stage the Planning Commission's retreat after that, so we can, we can take a look at that. It's all coming right up. I'm about to report that to you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so good segue to move right along. So the next item?
We have a brief director's report. Your next session is February 12th, and.
I'm sorry, we still have.
Apologize. Oh, we have the emergency permit.
The coastal development permit.
Yes. This, I forgot that we did that. In your packet is a copy of the emergency permit that we issued for a drainage improvement at the Poplar access point for Poplar Beach. There's a lot of concern in the near.
Excuse me, point of order. Why don't we take a moment so that people want to leave, they can get out. It's hard to follow.
Take a minute, and then.
We shall wait.
Thank you. So if you could, if you're heading out, be gone.
Two minutes, we'll come back.
Thanks. I didn't mean to step on.
Thanks for coming today.
Indeed, thank you. So this is a permit that we've issued to our own Public Works Department to remove and replace an existing deteriorated corrugated metal storm drain pipe. It's at the Poplar Beach access point near the parking lot area. And the need for immediately addressing it is that the way that it is in disrepair could pose a threat for significant erosion in the near term. The temporary condition will have a pipe that comes all the way down to the beach with dissipator to really try to control what's going on there as long as we can. There will be a follow-up permit that will address both access and this drainage correction. And then furthermore, this is all in the context of the Poplar Gateways Park Plan that's been going on. The Coastal Commission was alerted of this item in advance of permit issuance, as well as after the permit was issued. They are supportive and pursuant to your LCP. We announce these to you and make sure that you're aware of them. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there any commissioners who have any comments, questions?
I think four of us live along Poplar, or very close to it. We're obviously in Arleada Park. We have another temporary fix in Seymour Ditch, or Canyon, as you call it, that's been there for a while, and aesthetically, it's all right. I'm a little concerned, looking at the design here, that we're going to have an eyesore for the next two years until we sort out what we're doing. So whatever we can do to mask it, think through what the visual aesthetic is, because it's going to take us a while to get a longer-term plan in place.
And I'll just, on behalf of Commissioner Benjamin, remind the commission that it's a water course, not a ditch.
Through the chair. So if there are four of you that are in that area, how many of you would be conflicted out on the permit? And if so, you will address me in the future as Emperor Benjamin.
Don't let it go to your head. If we're all conflicted, then we can't.
Withdraw straws.
I'm out of it. I'm out. Okay. I guess, do we have a public hearing on this? We can open it? Any, anybody from the public interest in speaking? Mike? No, closing it? Okay, moving on.
All right, we'll wrap up with a brief director's report. Your next meeting is February 12th. You will see an item come back to you that you had continued. It is the single-family home at 2801 Champlis Le Se. This is one of the, one of two projects that was the impetus for the Stalaski Gonzales planned development work that we did over the fall. And this is the smaller of the two houses. That project is ready for you, and it's been noticed. So you will see that on the 12th. I will not, I have a conflict, so I won't be here. Doug Garrison will be sitting in my chair. Scott Phillips is the project planner, and Heather will be here, and she knows this project and the Stalaski Gonzales PD inside out. So we wanted to continue with that session so that we don't have a conflict later, where we're getting backed up with a few other projects. February 26th, we're going to see you for a study session, as we've already discussed, on the land use plan. We're also going to convey the Housing Element Annual Report to you. That's something that we do every year. We have a deadline of April 1st to get it to HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. After the Planning Commission sees that report, it will go to the City Council. And then again, we're holding open March 26th for another land use plan study session. We're getting started with community development director hearings in 2019. We have one on February 6th. It's in addition to a single-family home at 250 Grove. It is in the appeals jurisdiction, so any appeal of my decision could come to you. For City Council, February 5th, they will see the Park's master plan. That has been recommended by the Planning Commission to the City Council. February 26th, City Council will have their retreat. March 5th, they'll have the Housing Element Annual Report. And then March 26th is the City Council Priority Setting Session, which is the same day as one of your meetings. So it's a daytime meeting. There will be staff there. I will support my role in whatever, whatever the city manager asks me to do with that. So we'll be as prepared as we can for a study session with you that evening. But frankly, we think we need to open up more time for dialogue. And so I'll be talking to the chair when you have time about our format for future study sessions. And that's all we have. Thank you.
So Jill, will there be a formal recognition of former Commissioners Evans and Damon, either from the City Council or?
There will be, and we did not realize that it was Commissioner Evans' last meeting with you. And so we will, we've been trying to figure out what would be most appropriate for that, and we are happy to do something for Commissioner Evans. And we know that Commissioner Damon really enjoyed the send-off that you gave him at your last meeting.
Great. As I mentioned to the new commissioners, I think we're all going to need to beef up on our architecture and design to replace the loss of Commissioner Evans. So with that, any planning commissioner communications?
Two things. One, I really want to thank you for taking on the chairmanship and encourage you to, you know, just make it your own thing. And I think you're going to do a fantastic job. So I'm really excited for you. And I'm happy to provide you with a celebratory drink at some point.
I will be happy to take you up on that at some point.
I have, the other question is, now that, from a practical perspective, we have three members, four members of the Planning Commission who have Poplar Street in their conflict map, does this, could we get an opinion at some point about the Poplar Gateways project and how we can participate in that?
We will be sure to do that for you and come back. Thank you.
Okay. Any other planning commissioner communications? So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I would like to, I move that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Marina Salome.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, me in your turn.